Good afternoon and welcome to our council informational meeting Tuesday, November 22, 2022. I'm glad you're here. We have a quorum. We'll get started. First, Sioux Falls Development Foundation. I know I was able to attend their function last week at the Military Heritage Alliance, the celebration of their year-end report, which was very positive. They've sold a lot of properties, moved a lot of things, and got a lot of good things coming. I'll refer you for more detail to the foundation, their website, if you want the details. But just rest assured, they're doing a good job, and they certainly have our support. Move on to council remarks. Are there any council remarks today? It looks like it's up to me. I just want to report that last weekend, I was able to go to the Orpheum Theater and watch the Sound of Music put on by the Dakota Academy of Performing Arts. And I will tell you what, we have some extremely talented young people in this community. The range that they could sing was just astounding. So if you have an opportunity in the future to go to one of those events, I would highly recommend it. I know that play is over, but there'll be more coming in the future. With that, we'll move on to our first exciting presentation. Sean Pritchard, the Washington Pavilion Management Agreement Renewal.
Good afternoon, council members. So before you today is a review of the five-year renewal proposed for the Washington Pavilion Management Agreement. This is the last of the three contracts we have for the entertainment venues that all renewed this year. And so this will be before you for action at your council meeting on December 6. So I'm going to take a few moments to just do a quick summary of the pavilion, which you're all probably very familiar with. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the changes to the agreement. Most of them were very, were kind of cleanup items to improve it and really reflect our current status of operations. And then I'm also going to invite Darren Smith, the Executive Director for the Washington Pavilion, to come up and share just a few highlights of things from the past year or so, and then some look-forward items as well as to where the Washington Pavilion will be going here over the next 12 months to several years. So just to kick it off, history of the pavilion. So the pavilion, since it originated and opened in 1999, it has been managed by a nonprofit organization by the name of the Washington Pavilion Management, Inc., or WPMI. The scope of their services are broad, and they relate to all aspects of the existing venue, including the arts venues, the science museum, operations, the art gallery, café, and of course, the Cinemat dome. We had two actual amendments to this agreement since it was last renewed for a five-year term back in 2018. In 2019, the Washington Pavilion Management took over operations of the Orpheum Theater from ASM Global, or at the time, SMG, who operates our event center. And then in 2021, after the Municipal Band Task Force, we also added management of the Sioux Falls Municipal Band to the docket of services that they provide to the city and have been operating managing that since then. Scope of services, as I mentioned, are very broad, managing all things related to the facilities, programming them, rentals, operations, performance. They oversee all maintenance and repairs. They oversee and execute agreements. They work with us on capital project planning and coordination, education and science exhibit development, marketing and ticketing, and though somewhat unrelated to us, they have their own development and fundraising arms as well to help them support their operations and many of the programming and initiatives that they undertake. To review the changes in the proposed agreement, there were several items that we worked to update with Washington Pavilion. The first one has to do with defining real property versus personal property in the agreement. So as you may be aware, the planetarium announcement, the donation, and the update of the Cinemat Dome into a planetarium was recently announced and received a very generous gift and naming that goes along with that. One of the things that that brought up was, as we get more into some of these type of developments and gifts that are received that are altering either the physical infrastructure of the building or attaching things to the physical infrastructure of the building, we needed to be clear about who would own those assets upon termination. So the previous agreement was written just assuming that the city was paying for all real property. And so it just assumed we have all real property, everything will be booked as an asset of the city, and that was the way it was at the time. With the current, like, planetarium, you know, there's opportunities, and I think over time, the pavilion has done some building improvements. Well, that could be considered real property, but it wasn't paid for by the city. And so we added some language that broadened the definition of real property to also include fixtures, so anything attached to the building. And then just to find a termination, any improvements to real property would be transferred to the city or to the next facility operator. The other thing that we added was in relation to personal property, whether it's equipment, essentially basically stating irrelevant to who paid for it. If it's personal property and it's affixed to the building, it stays with the building upon termination. They still, upon termination, any personal property that was purchased by the Washington Pavilion nonprofit stays with the nonprofit. So just tried to be clear about that. We did update the insurance provisions that came up in an audit last week again, and we had talked about the fact that we are updating these as we're going into these renewals. So it takes it from a 45-day requirement for renewal prior to expiration to 15 days with the option for a one day. It's just better reflective of the insurance climate that we're in. We included some language on coordination for naming opportunities and gifts so that the city is working very closely and consulting with them as we go through this process so that when we get to the end, we know that it's something that's acceptable to the city in terms of the building as well as acceptable for the Washington Pavilion itself. And we also included language that if there are endowments created, like the maintenance endowment that's being created for the planetarium, that upon termination, if there is an endowment, the city has the right to that endowment being transferred to the city. We increased the responsibility of maintenance expenses. So before the nonprofit was responsible for anything $2,500 or less within the building, and the city covered everything above that, we've increased that to $5,000, so more of those expenses, just with inflation and just an expectation that we, you know, anything up to $5,000 really should be covered by the operating entity rather than the city of Sioux Falls. We required maintenance agreements for all major mechanical systems. This is very similar to what we had for ASM Global. We allowed for email approvals of anything that was required that didn't require official notification, just to make it easier to administer. We made it clear that the public facility fees, which weren't specifically addressed within the agreement previously based on ordinance, they're to be retained by the nonprofit, utilized toward the operations, maintenance of the facility. The Municipal Band, which was an amendment, is now a part of the agreement. The one thing I will point out is that there's a separate termination by either party for the Municipal Band. So if for some reason WPMI chose that it was no longer working out for them to manage the Municipal Band, or the city decided that it didn't, it wasn't working out, we could terminate that part of their management services without interrupting the rest of the agreement. So, and that's a 180-day or 60-day requirement. No intent, but we just wanted to make sure that that flexibility was retained within the agreement for both parties. We also included use of the city facilities for rent-free 10 times a year. So we hadn't had that built in previously. It's what we built into a couple of other agreements. We do use the facility and the Orpheum on intermittent basis for one-team meetings or things of that nature. So it allows the opportunity for the use of that facility for the city events as long as we're not conflicting with a revenue-generating event. So we want to make sure that we're flexible with this, very similar to what we structured with the lease for the baseball stadium, very similar to what we structured. We had, we have the same kind of provision with the State Theater when the donation was made to the State Theater. We have the same provision with Startup Sioux Falls for use of their kind of consolidated or meeting space as well. So we included that. The one thing that was requested from WPMI is that we coordinate any booking through the contract administrator or through finance so that they're not fielding calls from across the city. And that was a previous challenge in the past. And so just making sure that that provision is not abused. Included a provision for prior approval to any alterations or improvement to the real property by WPMI. And then we updated the discrimination provisions to the current discrimination provisions, and we added a force majeure provision, as we can see from the pandemic, important to be able to, I guess, foresee things that we maybe couldn't see before. So those are in our other agreements as well. So those are the major changes to the overall agreement. And at this time, I'm going to invite Darren to come up and just share a few highlights about all things happening good at the pavilion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Darren Smith, Washington Pavilion Management Company. I will, I'll be brief. I feel like you guys have heard some of this before. Just want to hit some highlights, and then, more importantly, you know, what are you going to see in the next year or so at the pavilion and the Orpheum in particular? So we continue to have record attendance in our museums, and when we refer to our museums, what we're specifically talking about would be the Kirby Science Discovery Center and the Visual Arts Center. And the next slide, we'll talk about some things coming that way in the next couple of years that will just, should continue to make those numbers even better and the experience better for those visiting. This season, we have a record Broadway, record number of Broadway season subscriptions. We're up about 15% over the highest number we've ever had. So it's a several hundred, it's an increase of several hundred subscriptions. So that's really great to see. We're hoping in the next one to two seasons to expand again, which we last did about five years ago with our Broadway shows, and that just opens up a lot of opportunities. The education program is full and expanding. I don't think that will surprise anybody. Talk about the need for preschool and daycare and so forth in town. The reality is, we're only limited by physical limitations. You know, if that building were somehow even bigger, the education numbers would be even bigger. So that's really what we're looking at to the future, is how do we overcome some of those physical limitations and serve that community need? Don't have an answer yet, but it's something that we're working on intensely internally. The Municipal Band partnership with Augustana University, which is new. So the Municipal Band thing was new with us, as you guys know, the last couple of years. And then when Chris Hill, the band master, retired, we entered into a partnership with Augustana University, which I think just strengthened that program in a significant way and makes it even more unique. So first year with that was great. That'll continue. We made a number of investments in technology improvements that will enhance the customer experience. I'll start with our ticketing system, which is really more than just a ticketing system. I think, again, as you guys know, we're very unique. We're one of four facilities in North America that combines, you know, performing arts theaters with a science center, a visual arts center, or an art museum, an education program, a café, bars, all wrapped into one at the Washington Pavilion. So we need, we need a quote-unquote "ticketing" system or software that can do everything from simply sell tickets to a concert, to sell a six-show subscription for an entire season, to sell a membership, a single daily admission to the museums, a registration for a kid in an education class. We need all of that in one system and database. So that's not easy to find. So we spent a year and a half researching every system we could with a nationwide consultant, and we've selected a ticketing system, software system, that it's a European-based system, European-based company, very successful internationally. We're the first client in the United States, which is exciting, a little nervous excitement at the same time. But it's the best system by far, best product we could find. And so we spent this entire year implementing it, and already we're seeing, you know, the fruits of that decision with our online sales and customer feedback has just been really good. You know, the two largest gifts in the history of the Washington Pavilion have happened just in the last few months, and I really feel like, it's just as you get that momentum, you just have more and more folks, philanthropic people in the community who, you know, they see good things happening, and they want to trust somebody to do good things with those dollars. And I feel like if we can, we can really keep this momentum going, it's going to be, it's going to be great for the community. And then investing in our mission more than ever before again, you know, our family series as far as our touring shows for kids. I don't think we've ever done more than two in one year. We're doing four this year. In the past, we always tried to at least break even on those. This year, you know, Winnie the Pooh was the big one we brought in. But we're doing four, and we're, you know, we're not going to break even, and we're okay with that. We're getting to that point where we want to do more of that going forward and have the museums open more and so forth. Real quick, looking ahead, as Sean referred to, that Sweetman Planetarium, that'll be opening in the summer of 2023. That's just going to be a fantastic addition. The Patricia Knudsen gift, which we announced just a few months ago, you know, that's $1.2 million. That is going to fund multiple projects, all in the Science Center. It's specifically designated for the Science Center. The first project we should be announcing pretty soon, and it's going to be very, very exciting for a lot of young families in particular. More national touring art exhibitions, like the one we have now, Guild Hall. This is the first one we've done in five years, and it's something we'd like to do every year. And the numbers are way up this year, so we know it works. You bring in a better product, the people will come, and so we'd like to be able to do this every year. They're very expensive, but again, it's something we'd like to do. And then Leonardo's Café is getting a pretty significant, what I'll refer to as family-friendly makeover. Every single area at the Washington Pavilion and the Orpheum has bounced back to be better than pre-COVID levels, and our pre-COVID levels were really good. We're better in every area. Leonardo's Café did not bounce back in the same way. And I think there's a lot of food and beverage places across the city who would, you know, who can empathize with that. And so we're not alone in that way, but we're doing a physical makeover and completely overhauling the menu and so forth. So you'll be hearing and seeing more about that as well. Let's see, next season is the 25th anniversary performing arts season, and so the bullet point below that, of course, makes sense. In June of 2024, the Washington Pavilion will actually celebrate its 25th anniversary, which is hard to believe for those of us who have been around that long. But we're really excited. We've got an internal task force that's already planning all of those celebrations, and we just really want to do a great job with that and let the community celebrate with us. The Orpheum Theater is scheduled to get some physical improvements and truly be busier than ever, so we're working with Sean's staff and the city to do some of these, you know, the lobby and bathrooms down there will get improved, the facade will see some improvements. And so when you think about everything going on in that area, the Steel District, Sharaput Two, all the development over the last 10 years, it really is needed. We're catching up with the Orpheum, so that's going to be great. And then just the last bullet point, I would ask you guys to, you know, look ahead to the next 12 months. We've got at least a couple and maybe more really unique public-private collaborations and partnerships that we'll be announcing, just things we've never really done, but it's going to elevate the arts and the community in a way that we're really excited about, and I hope you guys will be too. And with that, Sean, are we taking questions now? Or are we?
Thank you. Council questions? Council Bronco.
Darren, just want to say, congratulations on everything. In our household, we're very excited about the planetarium in particular, but it all sounds great. Love the ideas that you have and what you're executing. Love the changes to Leonardo's. One thing that I hope that we have greater opportunities to discuss, we have discussed it somewhat, is I know that some of these traveling art shows are very expensive, but some of the local art is not as expensive. And in those situations, love to expand access for families, the possibility of those being potentially free or at least at a very affordable cost for working families so that the children can have exposure to the great art, to the extent they're interested and get excited about that.
Absolutely. Great point. Two or three things real quick off the top of my head. Something really unique we do is Free First Fridays. So the first Friday of every month from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., anybody in the community can come in. It's completely free of charge. Number two, what we're starting to do more of is get local businesses to sponsor free dates in the museums.
Absolutely.
Lloyd Companies is a recent example, the most recent. So that's awesome. And then the third thing I would say is our school field trips. We're doing about 300 school field trips. I think that number's going to go up significantly with the planetarium in particular, but those school field trips, and I think it's important for you folks to know that, you know, we have the standard charging for those field trips, and we have endowment funds that help pay for that. But when we have Title I schools where the low income, the income levels are, you know, substantially high, in almost every case, those schools and those kids are not paying. We use endowment funds and so forth that we have from generous donors for that. So there's three ways, just off the top of my head, that we're really trying to increase what we're doing there as far as access.
That's terrific, and I commend you on all three of those. But, you know, not to, not to push it too hard, but I even think there's a few other ideas we could explore within those same guardrails to accomplish same goals.
Other questions? Councilor Nixer?
Darren, have you heard of Claude Monet, the immersive experience, or seen it?
Yes, we, in fact, we were just talking about this yesterday. There's the Van Gogh immersive experience, and then also the Monet. So I have not seen personally, but I've seen videos of the Van Gogh experience, and that is something we have looked into. So if you want, we could talk more about that. And then somebody yesterday mentioned the Monet, that's similar in concept to the Van Gogh experience, but yet maybe could be held in a space like ours. The Van Gogh is typically held in large commercial warehouses. It's huge. We could not do it at the pavilion, for example. We would have to find probably a vacant commercial building here. Anyway, yes, I've heard of it, and there's some excitement to see if we could get that.
Yeah, I actually went to the Van Gogh in Nashville, and it was stunning. We actually watched it through twice. And so it's a cool concept, so if there's something that would work in the, you know, kind of in the scale that you have, it's something worth looking at. It's wildly popular in many cities.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
Well, I greatly appreciate your work, and I will say, back, back in the day when the city of Sioux Falls had a vote to either tear down the Washington High School or make it the Washington Performing Arts, it was very controversial, very close at that time. I was on the wrong side, and I was wrong. I didn't have the vision for Sioux Falls. I will say that I'm on record as saying that. But I'm probably the only one in this building that's been able to see Peter, Paul, and Mary at the Sioux Falls Orpheum when they were here in town, and that's just a great facility. There is, I believe, there is a Christmas program coming at the Orpheum. Would you talk about that, just a little bit?
So Kurt, I apologize. Which one? So the, we have several this time of year. December is one of the busiest months of the year. So we have 'Tis the Season, which is a community theater program that takes over down there. We have Charlie Brown at the pavilion, and then a number of others at the pavilion that will typically come in each year. So if you have one in mind, I could touch on that, but we have a lot of them.
Well, I just wanted to point out to the public, if they're watching, that what a great place to go and see live theater is the Orpheum, and this is a great time to do that. So.
And thank you for the mention earlier about the Dakota Academy of Performing Arts, or what we call DAPA, the Youth Theater Program at the Orpheum. It graduated from the Belbus Theater, our small 300-person theater, to the Orpheum Theater when we started managing that, allowed them to expand. That might be, of all the great things going on, that might, that might be the program that has grown the most percentage-wise in my time there that I've seen, which I think is really exciting. And we're seeing it in the high schools, too. The performing arts programs in the high schools are really exploding. And of course, that's great for us. We hope those are all future, you know, Broadway-goers and subscribers, but it's pretty cool to see. I'm a sports guy, and we focus a lot on sports in this town and how sports is significantly expanding. But I tell you what, performing arts in Sioux Falls, in our programs, what I see in the high schools, it's exploding.
Well, it certainly is, and I understand the art exhibition that's currently at the Washington Pavilion is outstanding. I've heard that from a lot of people. I have personally not been there, but I would encourage people to go. Thank you for your presentation, and Director Pritchard, thanks for all your hard work to update the agreement. We'll move on now to the exciting part, Homeless Task Force Report. Council McCarron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, fellow councilors, for the opportunity to report on the Homeless Task Force. I'll seek to be brief today and cover the important items, and then we can dig into detail on one-on-one conversations as well moving forward. The Homeless Task Force was created this last summer, if you recall, to really identify how can we establish policies and programs that would help us reduce homelessness over the next 10-year period. As I was leading the task force, the thing that I kept emphasizing with the group is that our role was not to develop a 50-page document that goes on a shelf somewhere. Our role was really to identify actions we can take in this moment in time that builds upon the good work done in our city and the good work being done in our city. I think we can't emphasize it enough. There's been a lot done in our community. We've got an amazing community of nonprofits, government agencies that, over the years, have cared really well for people. And right now in our city, there's a bundle of organizations and community partners that are doing really good work. And throughout the task force, we really tried to emphasize that good work is being done, we're trying to come alongside that good work and strengthen it. So I wanted to start by giving thanks to our task force members. We had 12 different members of the task force from the community, three city councilors, and really wanted to emphasize, what I was really appreciative about those who served was, I couldn't draw up a better team of people that had either firsthand experience, staff experience, board experience, or community experience. And I mean this completely sincere, that you could not get a more diverse group of opinions in the room in regards to political philosophy, in regards to experience of how we talk about this type of topic and move forward as a community. So I'm so appreciative of those who served and shared their perspective and their insight. There's two or three people on this committee alone that, to be honest, they have more knowledge than I would even begin to think that I have on this topic. So so appreciative that they're willing to share their time with us. There were seven formal meetings and then working sessions, and then we had a variety of small research meetings outside of that, and lots of one-on-one conversations between task force members and community members as well. So a big thank you to the 12 people that stepped forward to serve on this task force. This task force is bringing forward four priorities for the council and the mayor to consider. Within each of these priorities is some specific actions. The first priority that we identified is, we need to find a way to promote an intentional, proactive, and healthy approach to engaging with the homeless. What does this mean? This means, how are we intentionally engaging with individuals who are sleeping in the park, panhandling at our intersections, or individuals who maybe are loitering in our downtown or anywhere in our community? Rather than just calling 911 and saying, hey, can you send a cop down here? This person's bothering me. What can we do that would intentionally engage with that individual, that would connect them into a system of care in our community? There's two specific actions recommended from the task force out of here. The first is to enter into a contract for professional services with an outside organization for a two-year pilot project, often referred to as a street outreach team. The goal of this would be to identify an organization in our community that really has a trauma-informed perspective, they desire to implement peer strategies, and they have Native American experience that would help us engage with individuals who are homeless. This approach has been done in multiple communities throughout our country. I would note, two of them specifically that I've had a lot of in-depth conversation with have been physically present with them in Rapid City. Rapid City has a program called Journey On. I believe that's received some publicity here in Sioux Falls. Journey On's program, within their first year, reduced calls to law enforcement by 1,800 calls in a 12-month period, and they are ramping up and expecting that to be 7,000 in the years ahead. Denver is another city that has taken a similar approach. In Denver's first year, they had 2,300 reduction in law enforcement calls. They are ramping up for 10,000 calls a year to this street team. And so this strategy's taken in other communities, and we're trying to learn from those strategies, what they're doing well, and how we could implement that here in our own community. The second action item that's recommended here is to develop a public education campaign that helps the public understand homelessness and healthy ways of helping. Where does this come from? Couple of things. One is, you're probably well aware, there's been controversy at different times in our community regarding the signs about panhandling. I think all of us have gotten emails and phone calls about panhandling. What are we doing? Throughout our community, there's been different conversations about the signs that have gone up about give to charity, don't give to panhandling. Those signs have been controversial at different times, depending upon your perspective. And from the task force perspective, there's a need to really educate our community on what's the healthy way to help someone? We know that people want to help. What's the healthy way to do that? While at the exact same time, how do we help those who are panhandling, hand-handling, sometimes for very legitimate reasons? How do we help them maintain dignity in the midst of being part of controversial activity? And so there's conversation here of how we help our community grow and understand the complication of homelessness and healthy ways to help. So that's a specific item that we're recommending as well. The second priority that was developed is to encourage community-wide participation in the Helpline Center's network of care. I think we'd all agree today that collaboration is a core value in Sioux Falls. If there's one thing I hear from the business community in Sioux Falls, government leaders, it's that they want to see more silos broken down, and they want to see community partners, agencies partnering together. The task force believes that one of the most respected agencies in our city and the state is the helpline. They've got a database already established where they're building nonprofits working together. So imagine it this way, you come into one of our shelters, and you've got to go through an intake process. You also go to the food, to receive food. What if both of those places were using the same data? What if both of those places were using the same database? So the food bank knew that you were staying at the shelter? Or if you were going to the Link for some services, the Link knew that you've been staying at the shelter for the last seven to 10 days? And so we want to see the nonprofits really encouraged to use this tool in our community. The best way I know to describe it is, when we talk about collaboration, it's really easy to say, hey, everybody, get along and play nicely. It's kind of like saying to kindergarteners when they get into a room, okay, everybody, share. It's probably not going to go real well. But if you put Legos in the middle of the room and say to the kindergarteners, build me a tower, now they've got something practical to focus on, something to rally around. What we're trying to do here is saying, we want you to share, but here's a practical way to start those conversations and communication with one another is through the Helpline Network of Care. So we're encouraging the establishment, action item one would be the establishment of a fund that incentivizes nonprofits or other agencies to participate in the Helpline Network of Care. There is a cost to this database, and the Helpline Network of Care and other community partners have been carrying the load for a very long time on this. And the Helpline Network of Care is stepping up as well to become HIPAA compliant, and there's extra cost with that as well. And so we're recommending that we come alongside the Helpline, provide them the financial support to make that possible. This city council and other agencies did a marvelous job in standing up something like the Link. While the Link requires a HIPAA-certified database to exist if they're going to participate, therefore, the Helpline Network of Care being HIPAA-certified is absolutely critical in having that across all agencies. And so it's appropriate that we would consider helping with those costs. The second specific action item on here is for maybe the mayor, or the chair, or the vice chair, to host a roundtable discussion with other key leaders across our city, county or state, talking about, how can we improve communication with the state database system and the city database system? The reality is Sioux Falls is the biggest provider of services in the state of South Dakota. Many people are coming to the city of Sioux Falls because this is where the services exist. Well, we're communicating with other people across the state. Other people across the state are sometimes using a different database, same type of concept. What if they could be, have those databases conversing with one another? So when an individual comes here from Aberdeen, we know what services they've received in Aberdeen, and those agencies are working together. This is a huge, heavy lift, but we want to encourage our city leaders to take an active role on leading a statewide conversation on this front. The third priority is to ask the city council to enter into formal planning with Minnetonka County officials to start new or grow existing housing first with wraparound service strategies. Many years ago in Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls saw its first safe home concept started between the county and the city. The whole concept of the safe home is, let's get somebody into housing, and then let's start working on those other issues they're experiencing in life. Oftentimes, the approach that we've taken historically is we've said, stop drinking, and then we'll give you a home. Anybody who understands substance abuse knows it doesn't work that way. You've got to provide an individual safe, affordable place to live where they know they've got emotional and mental safety in order for them to work on that addiction. And so we're encouraging us to promote these types of programs that are happening, for example, in Houston with great success. And so I think it's appropriate, the task force thinks it's appropriate, that we would establish a joint committee with the Minnetonka County Commission to explore grant funding for this type of opportunity or others, and look at, how can we expand the safe home approach in our community? Recognizing that the community has only grown since we implemented the first safe home. And so we're not recommending necessarily building another safe home, but what principles can we take from that and expand in a broader program across our community? The fourth priority is to review the existing loitering and panhandling ordinance with the city law enforcement, city attorney's office, and other impacted individuals. As already commented on, many of us receive phone calls and emails from business leaders and other community members that are concerned about the amount of panhandling or loitering they're experiencing in our city. And so the task force spent some time on this, received different presentations from the city attorney and the police chief. This is a complicated matter when it comes to the law and legalities. They are recommending that the city council, though, out of respect for our business community, specifically owners along 8th Street and other areas, takes a hard look at, what can we do to respect those business owners and other community members that are expressing concern? And so we're recommending that the police chief, city attorney, and others take some time to really determine if there are changes we can make to our loitering ordinances that would help those downtown business owners and also people traveling through our community. One quick item on this, the chair of the council and I have met with the police chief, the city attorney, and the mayor to begin discussions on this, and are beginning to have conversations about what we could bring before this body. Well, these priorities do come with a financial impact, and there's some costs to implementing these different ideas and strategies. The overall cost over a three-year period for the identified strategies would be $977,000, not including a housing-first strategy with the county, as we have not entered into those detailed conversations. We believe it's appropriate to have a two-year grant for the development of street teams. This would not be funding from the city alone, but there would have to be funding from other agencies, from other organizations for a street team concept to begin. They can't exist simply on $300,000 alone. So the city funding would be coming alongside other sources of funding as well. We've taken these numbers, looking at what they've spent in Rapid City, and Denver, Salt Lake City, and in Tulsa. And looking at those cities and talking with those cities, they had recommended these size of numbers so that you would have a say over the metrics and the type of programming that was implemented. So that's where the numbers came from. They weren't just kind of out in the sky one night, hey, let's take this, sounds like a good amount of money, to spend on, spend on that. The Helpline Network of Care grant, recommend establishing a fund. That fund would then give out grants or some other mechanism to provide financial support that would allow nonprofit agencies to slowly step into the cost of using the Helpline Network of Care. By the third year, we would only be paying 25% of that cost for a nonprofit. The fourth year, that nonprofit would be solely responsible for that cost. But we want to take care of those upfront costs, get that nonprofit some runway to start a relationship with the Helpline Network of Care. And then the Helpline Direct Support, this is again, to help them become HIPAA compliant, to help with those extra fees as they're taking on this extra load during the season. And then the Public Education Campaign, these numbers were developed, looking at what the city spent on some of the COVID campaign promotions that they had done, and talking to different agencies in Sioux Falls of, what would it take to get people's attention and really deliver a message that people would understand, community-wide? And so that's what we're looking at, is the initial financial impact to the city of Sioux Falls. And obviously, there's a big enchilada that's not on here, and that's the housing first, depending upon how conversations would go with the county and the exploration of the housing-first model. There were other critical issues that were identified by the task force, but recognize that in these other critical issues, there was good work already being done in the community or conversations underway, and we did not feel as appropriate for us to make a recommendations on these issues while there's other important conversations undergoing, or there was not a majority agreement on how to move forward on these critical issues. Couple of quick things on here, shelter capacity was discussed a lot. You probably heard in the news, the number 155 used a lot regarding the new fire marshal capacity at the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. There was lots of conversation, should we encourage another shelter? How do we do all of this? There was not agreement on the task force, and admittedly, there was tension regarding this specific issue. Where we ultimately landed in discussions with the county was, let's work on downward funnel things and see if improving the housing-first strategy, improving communication between shelters, we could create more capacity by getting individuals out of those shelters quicker into more stable housing, and see if that strategy would work, recognizing that the establishment of another shelter could create a variety of other issues that we might not be prepared for at this time. Couple of other critical issues that came up. One interesting conversation is proactive measures. Just having the conversation, what are we doing to look 20 years down the road right now? Of saying, instead of the basement's flooding, help us get the water out of the basement. What are we doing to prevent the basement from flooding in the future? So for example, graduation rates for our Native American community. What are we doing, community-wide, to improve those graduation rates? Another critical issue was identifications, recognizing that's a real challenge in our homeless community, losing them often or not having access or having the funds available to get identification, which causes a whole host of other issues. Mental health services was a common thread that we talked about consistently in the task force, yet we recognize the Link has been established, and they're in the middle of strategic planning right now, and we need to let that strategic planning play out before we engage in further conversation. There's conversation ongoing right now in our community about sheltering homeless families. Many of you may be aware that the Children's Inn has moved to a new facility, now called the Family Shelter here in our community. And so that opened up their facility. There's organizations looking at buying that facility, and potentially, that facility would then be used to shelter the current families that are at the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. And so it might be a better approach to have the families out of that environment, in their own environment where they're receiving specific care. The other conversation that continues to come up, that's no surprise to this council, is, what are we doing to create ongoing creation of more housing units? We all recognize the tension that exists in creating more housing units across the board in our community. Thrive in Sioux Falls is having serious discussions about a housing trust fund, and we need to allow those conversations to get a little further down the road before we interject in them. So there's some other issues that the council needs to be aware of. What are our next steps? Three items. First, over the next 30 to 60 days, this council will see, hopefully brought before it, a resolution, a budget supplement, or an ordinance for each of the specific items. It's highly unlikely that you'll see all of that in one night, but you might see an ordinance about panhandling or loitering in 30 days. You might see a budget supplement about street teams in 45 days. And so I'm working with the administration, and will also be working with council leadership on the appropriate timing of when we bring each of those items forward over the next 30 to 60 days. Right now, we've established some conversations with the administration about an ongoing management plan. Now that the task force has presented its priorities and recommendations, how does the administration see us managing these things and keeping them in front of us on an ongoing basis? And so we had an opportunity to meet with Chief of Staff Erica Beck, and she's talking to the administration now about the appropriate way to proceed forward with that. And then moving forward, thanks to the council chair, has provided us an opportunity to provide a monthly update to the council here of how things are proceeding at an informational meeting each month. Those are how we're proceeding forward at this time. Finally, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'm going to do it, and the chair can shut me down. Three personal comments to consider as we're having this conversation. Number one, I think it's really important to recognize that there are no new silos being recommended or funding requests that will be solely funded by the city of Sioux Falls. There is nothing being recommended here that's like, hey, let's go do our own thing. Everything here is taking into consideration what's happening in our community or what has happened in our community. And nothing in here is saying the city's going to go alone on something, but it's in partnership, community-wide. The second piece that I'd mentioned that's extremely critical, and I can't encourage us enough, I'm going to sound like a broken record probably in six months on this, is we, as a city council, have to return to the conversation about mental health services for our homeless population. We recognize that mental health is an issue across every economic status in our community. However, many of us are fortunate to have great health insurance where we can provide, we can find the service provider necessary. That's not true for our homeless population, and it starts to create a variety of other issues as well. This is a serious issue in our community, that the homeless population may not have access to the service providers that we have. It creates other issues for our law enforcement, other issues for our emergency room, and other issues for other service providers across our community. I want to encourage this council, the Link was a fabulous, fabulous step in our city. I want us to make sure we don't start something and then come back to it 15 years later. Let's right now be in conversation with the Link and the county of how we best improve that service and other services in our community. And then number three, the reality is, the needle's not going to be moved unless we grow our housing-first strategy with the county and community partners. We're going to hear that number 155 over and over and over again, and we're not going to be able to do anything about it unless we start another shelter or unless we tackle this housing-first strategy. And so I want to encourage us that these are difficult conversations with the county, these are difficult conversations with the community partners, but this is where the real meat is on the bone that will create long-term impact, is getting people into safe housing where they can then begin to experience transformation and become self-sustainable. So as a council, I'd encourage you to take into consideration those things. That's as brief as I can be, Mr. Chairman. Questions, smart remarks, comments?
Counsel, Counsel Silver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counsel McCouris, for that. I don't know what you add to that. That was pretty thorough, pretty well done, and I know your, your personal comments at the end, they're certain, I think, reflect a lot of what we're all thinking. But I mean, it was just one of those, when you walk into something like this, it's just such an overwhelming topic, and what did we spend, eight meetings in two months? And, you know, as I think you put, we're not looking to make another 50-page manual to sit on the shelf. It's kind of like, what do we do with the good that's being done and kind of tweak with that and work with all the good work and people that are already addressing this issue? And what's the healthy way to help someone? I love that, the way you put that question. I think that overall, the work was done and done pretty well. I think the, the task at hand was to do just that, find a way to kind of fit into what's been done before, get it just a little bit better. I always look at it as, can you just move the needle a little bit? And I'm quite sure that this plan will do that. And Counsel McCouris did just a great job leading and setting the priorities, and as most people who know him, he came into this position, I think it's been heavy on his heart, and he's worked and walked the walk with this particular subject for years before he got to the council. So I think he was the right man to lead this, and boy, it was a talented group of folks, again, as he talked about, that worked on this committee. A lot of different views, a lot of diverse views, a lot of very smart views, a lot of very smart people were, I kind of knew some of you, but I got to know some of you a little better. And that was really good experience, too. So I can't really sum up any better than you just did. I think it's a step in the right direction. Of course, it's, it's not cheap, is anything nowadays, and when you get government involved and budget-wise and some of these numbers, I'm sure we're going to have a pretty healthy conversation on what we do with that. But good job leading us in a direction, starting this conversation or keeping it going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bronco.
Rich, I really appreciate your work on this. One thing I wanted to begin the conversation about is, when you talk about one of the elements of the solution being a public education campaign, I think that we'd love to clarify that the, the largest part of that, at least as my understanding, is not necessarily educating the public about the problem. I think the public's fairly well aware of the problem, but I think what you're talking about is helping the public understand that there's going to be new, new solutions available, specifically like, that they might be able to call the street team instead of calling the police, or letting the public know what the appropriate remedy is, what are the steps to take if there is a homeless person, a panhandler, somebody who's presenting a danger to a business, somebody who's making people feel unsafe in one of our parks, that we have new ways to deal with it. It's educating them on new remedies, not as, it might possibly be misinterpreted as continuing to lecture someone on that there is a problem or something like that. I don't think that that's what you're, you're talking about, and I wanted to kind of clarify here for the audience, that it's educating people on how we can get these difficult situations resolved using the new tools that you're proposing. Is that, am I, am I getting it right, or am I off the track here?
I think you're, we're looking at two different aspects. One is the community as a whole saying, how do we respond? Go to, I'm just using an example, go to siouffalshomest.com today and help you understand a better way of engaging with, with the homeless community, or you're outside your business, getting everybody trained to that, call 1-800-BRONCO if you need a street team member to come today. So, you know, just building it into people, knowing that this is how we respond as a community.
Other comments, questions?
I thought that 800 number was Patterson.
That was at one time. It's been changing, depending upon who volunteers.
Oh, okay.
It might be a rotating phone number.
Counsel Nitzer?
I've expressed this to Counsel McCouris privately as well, but as full disclosure, as some of you remember, I voted against the task force, not because I didn't think it was an important subject, but because of exactly what he was referring to, which was the fear of that there'd be another 100-page report that would go on a shelf. And in fact, we had paid $50,000, $25,000, I think, from us and the county for Augustana Research Institute to do a report, and I thought it was well done. And it more or less went on a shelf. And so that, that was my concern, but I watched every meeting, and I'm thrilled to say that it was not at all what I was concerned about. It was, it was fantastic, and I was really, really impressed by what the entire task force did. They came up with actionable goals. One of the things that the previous report talked about was, you need to have short-term goals, you need to have things that are actionable, not just pie in the sky, 10-year plans. And these are very specific goals. I was also incredibly impressed by the actual members of the task force. I mean, these are people that live in that world. They work in it. Some of them even have, have been homeless. So this wasn't a group of, you know, 10 bureaucrats that have, that aren't in it. This was people that are in the trenches, working on it. This was people that are in the trenches, working on it, and so it was really fascinating discussion. I can't imagine how much time was spent. I really appreciate what the task force did, the time that they took. And I just want to thank Counselor McCorris for his leadership. Obviously, he gets in the trenches and he gets into the details, and this is a, you know, it's a messy, hard issue. It's really important, though. But I was just incredibly impressed by what came out of the task force, and I'm really excited to support it and looking forward to some of these things coming forward. So, great job. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? Well, it looks like I get to wrap it up a little bit. I did serve on the task force, and Rich, thank you very much for leading it and bringing the right people to the meetings, and not only the people that sat on the task force, but also the people that provided information to it, some of the places that I would not have known to look under. And I will say, and echo some of the things the other people have said, the fact that this city council is looking into this because these events are happening in the city doesn't mean it's only the city of Sioux Falls' problem. By us putting our foot forward and leading the other entities that are actually working in the area, the coordination that we can provide and spend some money in those areas, I think we can get buy-in from places that probably haven't been as involved as they should be. Certainly, as the legislative session happens this, after the first year, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussions on this problem, not only in Sioux Falls, but across the state of South Dakota. The one thing that I would, I do have a concern about as we go forward, we talked about the mental health of homeless, and I agree that that's an issue, but it's an also issue there about the ability or the, as you say, the amount of providers that are out there in the mental health world right now. From what I hear, they don't have enough people to provide the services we might need. So that's a problem I don't know if we can solve, but...
That's a great point, Chairman. The Fire Chief and I have actually had specific conversations about that, about some unique strategies that we could use with the link or Falls Community Health to try to open up avenues to other providers in our city, our state, or the nation, whether that be through telemedicine or other avenues as well. So I know that the Fire Chief and the Police Chief are well aware that the provider issue is at the forefront of this, and the Fire Chief specifically is looking for unique ways to engage other providers specifically.
Well, thank you again for all your hard work, and thank you for the board members that are here in attendance to follow up on that. I'm sorry we don't have questions for you guys, but maybe afterwards some people will. Thank you, and we look forward to the next step as we go into more meetings. We'll move on now to our last presentation, the siouffals.org website redesign.
Good afternoon, Justine Murtha, Digital Communications Manager for the city here. And we just wanted to provide an opportunity to give an update on our website redesign project, especially before we have some opportunities for public input, so just providing an update for you on that. Oh, this works, I'm sorry. For some project background, siouffals.org was last redesigned in 2016. Each month, the website has more than 70,000 monthly users, so that is our most visited city location. About 60% of those users are visiting on mobile devices, so we want to make sure that it's accessible on those devices, as well as probably about 70% of our visitors are coming directly from search, so we're also keeping that in mind. Right now, we have more than 4,800 pages, 9,000 documents, and 6,000 images that exist today, so there's a lot of content out there. And when we're talking about the Sioux Falls website here, we're talking about siouffals.org, sulandlib.org, and the midaquaticcenter.org. All of those are managed within the same system. And then in June of 2022, the city selected Granicus as the partner for this redesign. So what are our goals for this project? We are trying to improve the organization and readability of that content so that visitors can more easily find the information they need. Second to that, ensure that all of our content is accurate, and then to find and fill any content gaps where information may be missing. Alongside that, we're going to attempt to refresh the design and layout to make it easier to navigate and strengthen accessibility. And then finally, we hope that this new platform will also make it easier for city employees to update and provide that information for residents. This is just a snapshot of our project milestones. We kicked off this project in October. We are currently in the discovery phase and covering the information architecture, which is a fancy word for how are we going to organize the website, and then looking to start in design and development in Q1 or Q2 2023 with the question we often get, when are we hoping to launch this? Late 2023. And then we want to provide some update here on opportunities for feedback. Right now, we are conducting stakeholder interviews with the help of our partner Granicus. Those are one-on-one interviews. I think about 10 of them are being scheduled or have already been held with members across the city as well as some public. We are going to host a public open house on Thursday, December 15th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Downtown Library. Anyone is welcome to come. It will be kind of an interactive workshop. We'll also provide a similar update about the process and where we're at. And then if you're not able to attend in person, we'll also be offering a community survey that will be available online in early December that we'll push out through our news releases, on the website, posted on social channels. Anyone is invited and encouraged to take part in that survey. And then following all of this initial user research, we'll also be pulling together, I say we'll, Granicus will be pulling together a sample of the website that users can also go through and test how that new navigation and layout is working. And so that will be shared out as well when that is available, probably in early 2023. All of the opportunities for public feedback are going to be shared through a news release listed on siouffals.org/redesign. That link currently works and posted on our official social channels. Residents can also go to /redesign today to sign up to be notified by email when those opportunities are open, so just trying to keep all those communication channels open if anyone does want to provide that feedback. That was really quick because I know we're kind of at the end of the meeting here, but that's all I have for you today. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions, Counsel? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you might not know this offhand, and that's fine, but when you're talking about readability and access and making sure that everyone can read the website or hear the website, like there are specific colors and fonts that you kind of dive into, right? Do you know what those are for ours?
There's a couple tests that it can be put through, like contrast testing to make sure that the colors are different enough that they're easy to read, and then like colorblind testing and things like that. I'm not entirely familiar with our brand colors and our brand standards, and whether those have been tested, I believe they have been, but that would also be a component of this new design when that is announced and shared, we can ensure that those are working correctly for that.
I think that's great. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzler?
So, totally just out of curiosity, just because I'm just a tech person, is this going to be hosted here or in the cloud?
Uh...
Like the web server, something?
That's a great question. I believe we keep the server up. Is that right? Sorry, this is Ally Hart's Communications and Culture Officer. Yes, it's on-prem right now, but the idea is to potentially move it to the cloud.
Okay. And then browser support, I assume Edge, Chrome, Firefox at a minimum?
Yes, we'll make sure it's working in all modern browsers. I believe Internet Explorer has sunsetted, so I'm not sure about support for that. But yeah, we want it to be able to work on as many devices as possible.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
I expected some.
Okay, well, how about one more? So, is it going to be?
I expected a lot of that from you.
Just, so out of curiosity, do you know what, is it going to be like PHP, Cold Fusion, what the programming language that they use? Or do you get into that, or is it more of an engine where you develop it and it generates the code?
Yeah, so the content management system, CMS, is going to be called Open Cities. I'm not entirely sure what it runs on in the backend. That's a little bit...
Like, do you, like, you engineers here, are you like sitting here like just writing code, or is it more of it, it's like you drag and drop and stuff, and then it generates?
Yes, more of the drag-and-drop functionality. It's really advertised as a low-code slash no-code platform so that any city employee could theoretically get in there and make updates for that.
Sure. So the engine's generating the webpages, you're not in there line-by-line coding and stuff?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
That's what I expected, some programming stuff nobody else understood. Appreciate that. Counselor Caris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I bring us kind of back to where most of us would understand for a few moments? Can I have a question for Ally? This website-related slash communications-related, I think one of the number one things that I get feedback from the public on is not necessarily about design of the website, et cetera, but is, hey, I saw this on Facebook, I saw this on Twitter, I didn't see this on the website, I saw this on the website, I didn't see this on Facebook, I didn't see it on Twitter, I saw it on YouTube. I'm just trying to understand, how do you bring it all together so that there's consistency across the board, recognizing that one of the challenges we have right now is there's not one newspaper in town that everybody gets, there's not one news channel everybody watches, everybody's on a different communication channel right now? How are we getting consistency across all the social networks and the website integrated together? Maybe my question about the redesign, how will this redesign help us get that consistency across all the channels?
That's a great question. You've really hit on what is one of our greatest challenges, is knowing the types of media and the places that people consume that media today is literally different with every single person in that room. It's next to impossible to maintain that consistency. One of the things that our team is doing this year is really making a concerted effort to be proactive, and that's the first step into creating that consistency. So actually taking the time to work with our departments and map out, okay, what are those key things that are going to happen each quarter, and how can we plan ahead and develop materials to promote them consistently? It's also about not being all places all the time. We need to think about if we're talking about housing, where are the people who we're trying to reach at? So it's not necessarily about putting everything everywhere, it's about being a little more strategic and who are we trying to reach and where can we meet them? As that relates to the website, I think the biggest shift that you'll see is, we know and have heard that our residents and our business owners and our visitors don't think about the city in terms of the departments. So when you go to the website, you don't know if you're trying to apply for a permit, which section of the site to go to. So we're really taking a step back and thinking about, as we're communicating with the public, how can we put things in buckets for residents, put things in buckets for parents, and not use such city-driven language? So hopefully that will help some of that as well.
Great idea.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. I will tell you, we're all looking forward to having that streamlined so it works the best way, and we trust the experts to get it done for us. Now, at this time, we move on to our public comment. Speakers are allowed up to five minutes on each of the topics that we have discussed today at this meeting. And just for those of you that are new to public comment, it's not an interactive time. We just listen, and then we might track you down later. So anybody for public comment at this time? Seeing none? Oh, come on up, you almost waited too long. Come on up. You have five minutes.
I just want to make a quick public comment on...
Please state your name.
Oh, yeah. Kayden Whitman. I should not assume everyone knows me. I sat on the city's homeless task force while we did these meetings. I was also in the smaller working group. And once again, just to echo what was said before, I can't thank Councilman McCorris enough for leading that. I felt like it was very productive, and the conversations that we had, although they were hard, we came to some excellent recommendations for the city council. And I can't encourage you all strongly enough to take these under serious consideration, and hopefully we can move forward with them. I have worked as an employee of the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. I'm a longtime volunteer of the banquet. I live downtown, I interact with a lot of our unhoused community members. I truly believe that the action items we brought forward from the task force will make a huge difference as we work towards reducing homelessness in Sioux Falls over the next 10 years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
There we go. Terry Liggins, a member of the task force as well, following one of my inspirations, Kayden. For me, my comments is, in my life, I was homeless twice. One, about 22 years ago when I was 10-year-old, and my mother took all of us to a women's and children's shelter in Omaha. And for 90 days, I had an experience that I didn't really recognize. I didn't know what was really going on. I was just a 10-year-old fifth grader. But that place changed my life forever and changed my mother's, all of her life forever. My mother's been clean from her substance use since that day, so it's been 25 years, 22 years? 25? 27? 27. 27 years since that day that she took us to a women's and children's shelter. And then I was homeless again five years ago, early in my re-entry from incarceration. And about a year after my incarceration, you know, my family support system kind of crumbled because of all the pressure it had been through, through all the years of the stuff that had happened. And today, I'm not homeless. Today, I also have, I'm coming up on five years of sobriety from alcohol. And the reason I've been able to persevere through homelessness twice is because of peer support services and because of trauma-informed care. Being introduced to that, being introduced to adverse childhood experiences at 31-years-old, right after my incarceration, completely has changed everything about how I see myself and how I see the world. I continue to go to face it together for my peer-to-peer support services, and I inform everyone around me on what it means to be trauma-sensitive to me. And so the recommendation that means the most to me is that first one, because that's where the peer-to-peer interaction comes in, the connection and the trauma-informed approaches. And so I stand here as a testament saying that those are the keys to my re-entry, my recovery, and my resilience.